Let's call the July 15th regular city council meeting to order. Pledge of the legions.
That pledge of the legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fruein?
Here.
Councilmember Mohan?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Chow?
Here.
And Mayor, I just would like to make the announcement that Councilmember Wong is participating remotely this evening, and I would request a roll call vote from council for every motion. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Do we have any close session report?
Good evening, Mayor. The council discussed the item on the agenda, and there's no reportable action taken. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a presentation.
Yes, Mayor, this is-
Yeah, we have a presentation from Santa Clara, the VTA. Thank you for the VTA, the CEO of VTA is presenting. Hi, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and council members. I'm very happy to be here to present a little bit about VTA and talk a little bit about what's going on in the West Valley. To start things off, I do have a presentation. Thank you.
Should appear momentarily.
Okay, do you want me to-
If you just prompt me and I'll go ahead and advance the slides.
Perfect, thank you very much. Okay, just to start things off, I'm just going to give you a snapshot of what VTA does, and then particularly what's going on in the West Valley cities area, including Cupertino. And I look forward to answering any questions you may have after I'm finished. So, next slide, please.
One second, I'm having some technical issues. I'm just, I'm just going to stop share for a moment. Try this again. Okay.
Okay, great, thank you. So, VTA is a multifaceted transportation organization that performs a wide variety of transportation functions in Santa Clara County. We're responsible providing solutions that meet the evolving mobility needs of the residents and commuters here, and this includes non-motorized transportation solutions. Some of our roles include being the public transit operator. We're the operator of bus, light rail, and paratransit in the county. We function as a congestion management agency, including planning for the county transportation and highway improvement projects. We also are responsible for programming discretionary federal, state, and some regional funds. And we also partner for interregional and intraregional services, including Caltrain, BART, ACE, Capitol Corridor, Highway 17 Express Bus, Monterey Salinas Transit Connection, and the Dumbarton Express Bus Services. We also deliver the voter-approved local sales tax programs, including the 2000 Measure A Transit Improvements Program and the 2016 Measure B Multimodal Multi-jurisdictional Program. Next slide, please. Most of us know VTA as running our core transit services. And our core transit services, I mentioned, are bus, light rail, and paratransit. Right now, because of our summer vacations, our ridership is a little lower than normal. We're averaging about 69,000 weekday riders on bus, which is about 76% of the pre-pandemic ridership. And we tend to measure ourselves against pre-pandemic because that's when we hit the big, our ridership really went down severely across the country. All transit ridership went down. But right before the pandemic, we were hitting about 90,000. Our normal weekday ridership, like during the school year, is around 85,000. So we currently are fairly close to that pre-pandemic number. On weekends, though, we're at 100% or higher. So our Saturday and Sunday service has recovered or has grown even more. On light rail, though, that's a different story, and that's true across rail services across the country. We're at about 42% of pre-pandemic. We're at 12,200 weekday riders on light rail right now. Most of the year, we have around 16,000, and before the pandemic, we were at about 28,500 riders. Now, our access paratransit riders, we're about 1,200 riders. That's up about a little bit from, oh, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, we're up about 89%. Well, we're actually up from a year ago, and that's about 89% from pre-pandemic levels. So we actually have quite a bit of ridership on the paratransit service. Like I said earlier, we're more than a transit service, so if we can go to the next slide. So in addition to operating all of our services, we also are unique because we're the congestion management agency for Santa Clara County, where we link transportation and land use planning. Even though we don't have land use authority, we work closely with all the cities in the county and actually promote that through the various initiatives like transit-oriented development and our complete streets projects. We build a lot of transportation infrastructure. There's probably not a highway you have driven on in this county that VTA hasn't had something to do with. We've put billions of dollars of improvements into our highways and our highway interchanges. We are also building the BART extension into Santa Clara County, the BART Silicon Valley Extension Project. I'll talk a little bit more about the BART project in a little bit, but that is a major project for this county as well. We help fund, as I mentioned, a lot, we help fund Caltrain and a lot of other regional transportation agency projects. When I talk about the highway projects, we're one of the few projects in, we're one of the few agencies in the state of California that actually designs and advertises, awards, and constructs highway projects for Caltrans. And that's not very common in most of the counties, and we do that for them a number of times. So if you look at the 280-880 interchange, that's what we just did. We just finished the De La Cruz-Tremble Interchange at 101. That's an interchange that VTA has delivered. So we've delivered a number of interchanges throughout the county. I would say most of the interchanges you see, if they're under construction, VTA is actually constructing those. In fact, recently, we're also going to be moving ahead on building some wildlife crossings across 17 and some other areas. So we are very multifaceted, building crossings and not just pedestrian and bicycle crossings, but we will also build them for wildlife as well, working with a number of partners, the Water District and Open Space Habitats. So we're very proud of our ability to deliver projects. The other thing that we have is a very aggressive and extensive TOD portfolio, trans-oriented development portfolio with over 20 sites. And we currently have over 2,000 units either already built or in construction or under development of affordable housing units in this county. As I mentioned earlier, one of the things that we are very keen on doing is funding the bicycle and pedestrian projects throughout this county or providing funding to the cities to be able to do that as well. And we have a number of programs that allow us to do that. I want to turn to one other, another activity that we do, and I'm going to the next slide. We are also the express lane operator for Santa Clara County. In 2012, VTA began operation of Santa Clara County's first express lanes on State Route 237 and I-880 corridor. By 2014, the lanes served 1.3 million toll-paying vehicles. About 120,000 vehicle hours of travel time savings have been gained in the corridor. VTA completed Phase 2 in 2019 and the extension of this, with the extension of the State Route 237 express lanes to near Matilda Avenue in Sunnyvale. Phase 3 opened up in 2022, which includes the US 101 corridor and a small portion of State Route 85, but that added eight more miles of express lanes in our corridor. And we recently just broke ground earlier this month, or earlier this summer, on Phase 4, which is the State Route 85 and US 101, State Route 85 interchange in the south in San Jose near State Route 87. And that'll be another section. One of the things about the toll lanes is that we've always been able to operate those in the black. So when they come onboard, we've been able to use those funds to continue to maintain and operate them. And this is the first year that we'll be actually putting funding and revenue that we have into projects such as transit operations. In the long run, we'd like to be able to continue to use those for transit operations, bicycle and pedestrian projects in the corridor, and other activities. They're very important to us as we continue to raise revenue, not only to help manage congestion, but also to be able to provide other mobility alternatives. Next slide, please. Now, one of the programs I really want to talk about because it really affects West Valley is, as part of the Measure B program, we do have the State Route 85 improvements. And there is $350 million allocated to State Route 85. There has been a number of studies that have been in this quarter to determine what that program will be. We have explored the path for this area, looking at transit alternatives, whether it be a transit lane, a light rail alternative, or various congestion relief projects. We're currently looking mostly at a transit lane or a congestion relief project. When the last study finished, we were about to do some work on surveying all the shuttles on 85, but then the pandemic hit, and that actually dropped off severely, the number of shuttles. We do know now that traffic has definitely emerged again on State Route 85, and we're looking at beginning those studies again on 85. The total amount that we've actually allocated out of the 85 corridor so far has been $21 point million. We've been allocated to date. There's a remaining $329 million. So we'll be working with the city staffs, with the elected officials in the corridors, with Caltrans, with VTA as the operator, and others to actually try to take a look at what is needed in this corridor, to actually be able to help support the congestion, and then other modes that would be in this area. So please, any feedback is really welcome as we're continuing to try to move this, really re-energize the work that needs to be done. Next slide, please. Another project that is in this corridor, which is actually part of the State Route 85 Measure B program, is the 85 Noise Reduction Program. We are on Phase 2 of this project. So as we celebrated the groundbreaking of Phase 4 of our express lane program earlier this summer, we also kicked off the construction on a pilot project to help reduce the noise on State Route 85. We've heard loud and clear that there's a lot of issues with the noise in this corridor. So we're laying a special kind of pavement that is shown to reduce road noise along segments of State Route 85 from South San Jose up to Mountain View. And the largest component of the traffic noise is actually caused by the interaction of the vehicle tires on the pavement surface. And this type of pavement surface, hopefully with this pavement's condition, could show to have a, actually lowering the decibels of about 13 decibels, which actually is quite substantial. So we're continuing to take a look at that, and that's for vehicles traveling up to 60 miles per hour. So we're going to continue to monitor that, and we'll come back to you with actually those results of that pilot study. And then, as I mentioned earlier on the next slide, and I'm not going to go much more into that, is the express lanes Phase 4 project. I actually talked a little bit about that. But as we broke ground on that, that is actually in this area, and we're continuing to build that project in this corridor. We continue to try to move forward the express lanes on US 101, and then we actually have environmental clearance for not just 101, but for the remainder of State Route 85 as well. Continue forward. So I did mention a little bit about everything that VTA does, but as part of VTA's 2016 Measure B program, there is a lot of activities in those funds. And this wasn't just about providing transit funds for VTA operations or other projects that VTA could use for transit. It actually, although it does fund BART Phase 2, it actually provides bicycle and pedestrian project funding that actually gets allocated to the cities, and it also provides educational funds on bicycle, actually bicycling, however the cities want to use that. It also has money in there for Caltrain grade separations for Sunnyvale, Santa Clara, and Mountain View. It provides money to the county expressway system, so the county, county streets and roads, actually, roads and airports actually has a whole system of improvements they want to do, particularly on Lawrence Expressway. VTA and Santa Clara County just developed a partnership where we will be helping deliver any projects on Lawrence Expressway for them. We have a series of highway interchange projects that are part of this area. One of those being Wolf Road, the Wolf Interchange Project that was just mentioned, 280. Local streets and roads, where we give an allocation every year to the cities, and Cupertino receives their share for primarily pavement management. We have the 85 corridor that I mentioned, and as well is there some for innovative solutions and money for transit operations. I want to talk a little bit about how you can figure out how much money has come into your city or into your area. So if you go to the next slide, if you go to that, if you actually go onto your phone or anywhere else and you hit 2016measureb.vta.org, it will actually show, it actually will allow you to actually look at a breakdown of how that goes for the West Valley cities. So overall, throughout the Santa Clara County, we've got close to $2 billion has already been collected through March 2025. And 2.3 billion has been allocated through June 2025, and 1.1 billion has been spent through the end of this month. And the figures for the West Valley cities shown here were 4.6 million on bicycle and pedestrian improvements and more than 19 million on local streets and roads. And the reason why it was the West Valley cities is because Mayor Chow and all the other West Valley mayors graciously invited me to present to all the mayors what VTA's been doing, and I was able to do that and actually presented this at a meeting with them. And so if you came in there, you could just click on just Cupertino and find out what's going on. Not only that, you can click on any project that it shows and actually get a list of the project, which is on the next slide. And it will give you, it'll show a list of projects, and if you click on that, that would actually let you know where that project is and what state, where that project is, whether it's been allocated or not, and whether it's complete. So this slide, as well as the slide after, it shows all the breakdown of all the projects in the West Valley cities to date that are funded by the 2016 Measure B. Most of the funding right now is for the pedestrian bicycle program and the local streets and roads network. We can look on, yeah, and that's the second page of the projects that are there. And then, just to wrap up, I just want to give you a quick sense about VTA in general, because a lot of people don't know how we're organized. We are made up of a 12-member board with six alternate members. There's five from the city of San Jose, two from the county Board of Supervisors, and then five from the smaller cities. There is one from the West Valley area. This year's Chair Lopez, who represents the West Valley cities, is sitting as the chair. We have one from South County, which represents Gilroy and Morgan Hill. The Northeast County is represented by two members, Sunnyvale and Santa Clara this year. Milpitas is the other city in that grouping, and then the North County has one representative. And then the MTC, any member who belongs to MTC who's not on our board is automatically an ex officio. And then we have alternates for each of those groupings. The board makes all the policies regarding governance, administration, financial management, congestion management for Santa Clara County, because they act as the board for the congestion management agency, and they provide all organizational oversight. And our biennial budget is on the next slide. And a quick overview is that our board adopted on June 5th, adopted our 26-27 biennial budget. We do see a small deficit going into, coming out of 26-27 of $868,000. That's actually small for 2026, considering we have a very large budget of over $600 million. So that's pretty much to me breaking even, and then we'll see about a $15 million deficit in 2027. Those deficits will be covered by our operating reserve. If we go to the next slide, that's, this slide shows a breakdown of our revenues expenditures for 2027. And we are expecting our deficit to increase over the next few years. We're continuing to make strong efforts in trying to look at savings for our agency, but at the same time, we'd like to grow our ridership and expand some of our services so that the service is more frequent. We're finding out the areas where we did put more frequent net service. We actually are seeing ridership grow substantially, so that is an important aspect to us. So those are one of the things, you will hear more about from us about whether we join a regional measure, that it would be, right currently now, they're pushing their state legislation, Senate Bill 63, that is looking at a three-county measure with the ability, it includes Country Cross County, Alameda County, San Francisco, with the ability for San Mateo and Santa Clara County to opt in. We may be opting into that measure, which would allow a sales tax to come forward to provide for transit operating funds for, or transit expenses for 10 years to help support the operating needs in the region, as well as continue to actually support transit mobility and regional connections, particularly important for activities that we're doing, such as FIFA, the World Cup, other activities that are coming forward. And then the last thing I want to mention, which I mentioned, was the BART Silicon Valley project, because we do get questions about this. It is a very large project, and that's on the last slide. And this is the six-mile extension. The first 10 miles have already been built into this county. The overall program is 16 miles. It is a six-mile extension, roughly a little over $12 billion, which five miles are in subway, and that's why the cost is so high. But the way we have the partnership with BART is we build, design, and build and own the structure and own the system and own the area, and BART operates and maintains the system. And that's the partnership we build and that we have actually an agreement with them on how we pay their operating and maintenance costs. And then they provide oversight with us when we're designing and constructing, constructing that. We currently are in construction for the West Portal. For the, it'll be a single-board tunnel coming through the downtown. We're looking at some cost-saving measures. They'll be coming to our board. There'll be a workshop on August 1st to talk about that, as well as Senate Bill 63. And then there'll be some decisions made in the fall about additional cost-saving measures for this project as we try to continue to get, move towards the federal funding. The federal transit administration has committed $5.1 billion, but we need to get the agreement signed, and the one way to do that is to continue to be able to have a strong financial plan. The $5.1 billion was the largest commitment the federal transit administration has ever given outside, well, as they say, west of the Hudson River, which means New York City. So we've actually had the largest investment made into a project. So we want to keep that investment, but it does mean we actually will have, continue to have those conversations in Washington, DC, and move that project forward. So that concludes my presentation. The last slide is just who to contact. I also want to introduce my chief of staff, Scott Haywood, who is here with me this evening as well. And Beverly Green is my Chief Government Affairs Officer, and her staff helps staff the, actually, usually is the one who's actually talking to many of the members around here. And actually, I think they staff the Policy Advisory Committee that I think the vice mayor sits on. So, thank you.
Thank you very well. Really appreciate you taking the time to come over to this council meeting to present. Very informative. We usually don't ask questions, but since it's so rare to get the CEO of VTA to come, I'd hope to entertain maybe one or two questions from each council member, if you would like to ask. Yeah. Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So this was very timely, talking about the noise abatement issue. We did have a member of the public talk about, at the Mayor's Monthly Chat, the, there's a break in the sound wall on the 280 on the south side. By break, I mean there's no sound wall that was constructed around Blaney and Lucille. And where, how should we, as a city, best approach VTA in order to have that mitigated?
So if you're someone from your city, from your public works department, contacts, actually, they contact Scott or myself, or just, we actually have a process on, we first go out, we take, we actually determine what, how long, when the sound wall, where the break is, what the residential, when was the residential community built, and then who needs to do a study, and then we work through that. So there's a process that we developed that we work with the cities on.
Okay, thank you. And then also, you mentioned Lawrence Expressway, and that VTA is now, you now have some kind of ownership of this. Same question regarding sound walls. We're trying to build a park there. Does that mean that there is a potential that there's some funding to extend the sound wall to provide some noise mitigation?
You know, I don't know, you know, the county has done a study as to the improvements they want along Lawrence Expressway. I don't know the extent of all those improvements, because they just, we just signed a letter to actually help implement them, like design and construct them, so we can find that out and find out what their improvements are.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Mohan?
I looked at the slide where you showed that you're expecting a slight deficit this fiscal, next fiscal year and a higher deficit in the following year. Have you considered the fact that federal funding is somewhat uncertain at this time? Have you taken that into account, or is that something you expect will come through regardless?
So the federal, it's interesting, we get funded different ways, and we are heavily reliant on sales tax. I will say that. The 60, we have a 1976 sales tax in perpetuity that was created with the county transit district at the time. And then there's funding coming from the 2000 Measure A and the 2016 Measure B sales tax. We do get some money from the formula funding, but there's also money at the state. So most of the operating money is a little bit at the state, but most of it's sales tax funding. The form, it's interesting, the money that comes from the federal government is mostly for state of good repair, but that's still just as important, because we can't run our, we can't operate our buses if we can't keep them in a good state of repair. That funding right now held in the president's budget, he actually held that amount of funding the same for the formula funding that would normally get distributed among the states. Whether that holds every year, right now that held. So that's actually good news for us. But some of the other capital programs, we're not so sure where the House and the Senate are going to go on that. So like the big, major problems, like the capital investment grant program that funds BART and that, they've cut, they've looked at cutting that back. So things like that are more problematic. But for operating or state of good repair, it seems to be holding. But everybody, the state really needs to be probably, for, I think the one big push in the state is the state really should be helping fund a level of consistency in the operating for all the transit agencies in the state. That's been the push, has been, is providing more consistency. But right now, at the federal level, they haven't, the level of funding that's, the formula funding has remained in the president's budget at the same level.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Hey there, Carolyn. Thank you for taking the time to come by and talk to us. I do have two questions. First question is really, how do you anticipate coexisting with lower-cost alternatives such as Waymo and driverless vehicles that are coming into the system as Waymo, Zoo, and other folks come this way? And the second question I have you relates around revenue streams. We noticed that ridership is down in general. What are you doing with land leases, advertising, and naming rights to boost the revenue on that side?
Yeah, and revenue took a big hit, of course, during the pandemic as well. So it was, those were sort of negotiated with them to hold them on time. Advertising revenue is a small stream for us. The streams that could be substantial for us, or really the express lanes, can actually become a substantial stream for us into transit operations over time as we build them, because they can be something that goes into the transit, parallel transit corridors and provide operations. So I know I'm answering your second question first, so I apologize. The other area is, but on advertising revenue, there is the ability to, so for example, there are a lot more special events that are coming into the area. And we actually have a very, a stronger focus now, and I think more, we have some staff who are much more specialized in these areas, who have those skill sets to actually bring, work with our vendors to actually bring in, like, for example, a station sellout during FIFA, is what we'll be looking at, so that we can bring in more revenue in those areas and be more creative about what we can and can't do with these big advertisers. So those will be the things that we'll be looking at to bring in revenue for us. The other area is- The other area is, and then as we grow the TOD portfolio, we're actually looking at, we're ground leasing. So most, we're not selling our land. So one of the areas that we just did is we bought a, we just bought a building in the downtown at, on Amadean Boulevard, and we bought it much more discounted, and it's a sixteen-story building. We'll be moving into, I think, eight stories of it, plus we'll have the board, board offices there. So we'll have about six floors to lease. We're leaving a campus that we've actually did get rezoned in the general plan for mixed use in North San Jose on First Street, right near a rail corridor that we have plans to complete, to redevelop. In fact, we have an RFP for the first piece of it already out. So we'll be moving into that building, but that will be leased revenue off the six floors, plus we will have lease revenue, plus we will slowly do that. But we're estimating we can get a billion to a billion and a half of ground lease revenue over the next eighty-five years. That will help support ongoing maintenance needs of our system. So, and not just the maintenance needs of our system, but maintenance needs of our facilities and not just the one, you know, like our yards and things like that, which are much more difficult to get funding for. So it's being creative about what we can do to help maintain the facilities and keep this system going. And so that's sort of the way we're looking at creating other ways, other revenues other than just taxes and, and, and doing that. The other thing is, so it's more self-generating it. When you talk about Waymo or Uber, I could, I know they, they can be really good partners with us. So for example, we had the service disruption this spring. We actually partnered with Uber to provide trips at just the regular transit fare that people could use, like the last week, when the strike went on, we actually asked them to come in and they actually provided trips for us on, for Uber, for Uber. But we actually do find them very useful for first and last mile, we, trips to, to our core network, particularly our rail systems. We also find them very useful because people oftentimes can still use them in the evenings when maybe rail service isn't running as frequently or the buses aren't. So it's still, they still provide an option. So they're not always the option. And also Uber, you know, they fluctuate by time of day. It's dynamic pricing for them as well. So, you know, those are the things that we look at. So they just sort of, they can very much complement a transit system. So I'm not, I, I, I see them more as something that can actually help us increase the ridership if we support the idea that they can help get our riders to our system or people can ride and then use them as a way home or whatever would need to be done. And I only say that because I have kids who take transit and then Uber home when they go out at night.
The language, I mean, the hub and spoke, the grid system and the point-to-point.
Yeah, yes. And it is, it is really what they call the first mile, last mile as well.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming. I have a lot more questions, but we are limited on time. So
Thank you.
I believe you have also a citizens advisory board that people can sign up. So how, what's the best way to provide feedback input to VTA?
One is if you just go to our website, there's a way to provide input in a number of ways. We also have every kind of social media to be able to provide input as well. And I will try to make this annually, I will come, and I know our chair wants to come as well.
Oh, great.
And come as well to, to visit as well, so. Also, we are looking for people to participate in the citizens working group that oversees our, that oversees our Measure B program. So that's something that's very important to us as well.
Yeah, so they can find the information about that on your website.
Yes, yes.
Great. Thank you. Really, thank you. Appreciate you coming. Okay. Great, next we have the postponements and orders of the day. We had postponed the item, an item from last council meeting for the Torrey Avenue City Hall Annex Design Contract. I don't think we will have time for this, this council meeting, so we will postpone again to September sometime, yeah. Okay, I, I think we do need a vote on this.
Yes, Mayor, request a vote.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Wong second.
Okay, let's vote.
Mayor, are you postponing to a date certain or to September third?
Just September, yeah.
Just September, okay, thank you. Councilmember Fruen?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now we, now we have oral communications. So, City Clerk, could you give the instruction? Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion. The total time for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes. As necessary, the chair may further limit the time allowed to individual speakers or reschedule remaining comments to the end of the meeting on a first come, first heard basis with priority given to students. In most cases, state law will prohibit the council from discussing or making any decisions with respect to a matter not listed on the agenda. A council member may, however, briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by speakers. A council member may also ask a question for clarification, provide a reference for factual information, request staff to report back concerning a matter, or request that an item be added to a future city council agenda in response to public comment. Mayor, I currently am holding nine requests to speak from in Community Hall. I see two requests to speak virtually, so that, it takes us to about thirty-three minutes. Okay, so first we have Chin Wong, followed by Krish Aurora, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Anyone wishing to provide comments on this item, please have your requests submitted in the next nine minutes. Chin Wong? Are you, yes, hello. You have a presentation that you'd like to share?
Yeah.
Okay, I will share my screen.
Yeah, my wife is the Chin Wong, but she went to outside to see the VTA CEO. I can't represent her to present this. Oh, could you help me present?
She'd like to speak a little later. I think we can accommodate that.
That will work also.
Okay.
Maybe put the Chin Wong into the end.
We can call her last. She's outside speaking with the VTA.
Okay.
The CEO of VTA, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
And next we have Krish Aurora, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Atav Chandrasekharan. Welcome Krish, and you, you have a presentation as well. I will queue that up for you.
Can you guys hear me well?
Okay, good.
Yes, we can.
Okay, good evening, council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Krish. I'm a rising high school senior, and today I wanted to talk about youth climate anxiety and addressing it with the help of the city. Next slide. So brief background about myself, I've been doing climate-related research for the past five years since the August twenty twenty wildfires, including multiple recognitions by the city in this building, so thank you for that. But recently, my cousins had to evacuate their homes because of the L.A. fires in January, and that caused me to kind of research climate anxiety and ways to address it. Next slide. So a brief overview about climate anxiety. A lot of studies show that over eighty percent of our youth are highly concerned about climate change and its impacts, and this is a huge problem because it results in a lot of different mental health concerns, most notably being depression. In California, wildfires are the big contributor to climate anxiety, and so we want to deal with that when looking at ways to address it specifically in Cupertino. Next slide. So I had a couple of Google search trends, and I was looking at them in California specifically since two thousand and ten. And you can see here that we have climate anxiety and climate disaster which have spiked in interest since two thousand and ten, but climate progress really hasn't. And the interesting thing is that California and Cupertino have made huge strides towards a net zero future. So it's weird that there are concern about climate disasters have outweighed our curiosity about progress despite the amount of progress we have made. Next slide. So I was compiling a lot of solutions, but I wanted to focus on number three, which is to balance our negative news with climate progress updates. And to prove the progress we are making, I looked at the California Air Emissions Board detailed vehicle transportation emissions for all California counties since two thousand, and I found some insights that I think prove the progress we've making. Next slide. So you can see with these two graphs that forty-three out of the fifty-eight California counties have decreased their vehicle emissions since two thousand, and when you factor in population increases, that goes to fifty-four to fifty-eight, reducing their per capita GHG emissions. And next slide. Specifically in Santa Clara County, we've reduced our emissions by thirty-three percent. So clearly, there's a mismatch because we made a lot of progress, but our youth isn't really seeing this progress, whether it's due to new sources embellishing like disasters or maybe it's just a failure to get the progress out to our youth. So next slide. I had three main proposals for the city. Number one would be to highlight more optimistic climate stories in our green newsletters, such as with some of the stories and insights that I was sharing earlier. Number two, I think, would be to update the city's climate action plan to both acknowledge and address climate anxiety. I know it was recently updated in two thousand and twenty-two, but even a verbal commitment to update in the future to deal with anxiety along with reducing emissions would be really helpful. And number three would be to make a website or some sort of tool that shows local climate progress to our citizens, maybe available on the city website. Thank you.
Thank you, Krish. Next we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Atav Chandrasekharan, followed by Wilson Lee. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. It's good to see you all. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and I wanted to talk about one of the high-density housing bills, SB seventy-nine, by Senator Weiner, and I believe Assembly Member Buffy Wicks has signed on to it too. This bill is very, very prob, causes a lot of potential problems for every city in the state. It is currently going through the Assembly Local Governance Committee tomorrow. I am a member of livable California, our neighborhood voices, and catalyst for local control, and we've been studying this bill for probably three to four months now. It gets worse every time it is amended by Senator Weiner. No one can understand what he is putting in there. The last thing was that he put something called fast buses, which the, the people from the three groups I belong to have never heard of something called a fast bus, so they don't know what he's referring to. Maybe VTA has heard about it, I don't know. I think it may pertain to something in San Diego from what I have heard, but we don't know. This bill lacks complete transparency. I have heard Saturday from the Saturday Livable California Zoom that they believe that it is going to override the HOA associations. This is just come up, it's brand new. It means that along the transit corridors or the bus lines or the rail lines, if you have an HOA association which is townhouse, condo complexes, normally HOA has the authority to make decisions. The city, Cupertino, actually lets the HOA groups make most of their own decisions. My mother-in-law lives in an HOA in West San Jose. She is ninety, widowed, retired teacher. This, if seventy-nine is passed, it means that people can come in and put in infill housing inside of these HOA associations and override the HOA authority. This is how strange the wording is in SB seventy-nine. It is supposed to be a TOD, Transit Orient Development Housing, along bus corridors such as Stevens Creek Boulevard, El Camino, but yet it is trying to reach out and take away authority in areas such as HOA groups, in homeowners groups. Is this the intent of this bill? What is Senator Weiner doing? Is this legal? Do we want this? I believe that they really want to put in high voltage transmission lines for AI along the corridor. Thank you.
Next we have Atav Chandrasekharan, followed by Wilson Lee, followed by Yu Yi He. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Atav, and today I'm going to talk about the number of squirrels that we've seen on the road. If you've driven down McClellan Road or Homestead, you may have seen a lot of squirrels laying dead on the road. Squirrels, like many other wildlife species, depend on connected tree canopy so, so they can cross without using the road. My idea is that you could build lightweight bridges to connect trees so squirrels could cross without using the road. And this idea isn't new. In fact, this first squirrel bridge was built in Longview, Washington, and, and in the Netherlands, Germany and the U.K. Some hotspots of, of where squirrels have been hit the most are McClellan Road, Deans College, and Blackberry Farm. Park on Shu, these locations are where residents have reported frequently, and I am prepared to help every step of the way. We can, we can engage volunteering activities and we could build the bridges together. Thank you for your time, and I hope you will consider supporting this important initiative.
Thank you very much, Atav. Next we have Wilson Lee, followed by Yu Yi He, followed by Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Wilson.
Yep, good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and council members. I'm Wilson Lee, I'm a longtime Cupertino resident and sharing my experience through, and findings through the ADU application process, and then actually propose an update to our city ADU ordinance, which is to allow four feet setback for any ADUs between eight hundred and a thousand square foot. So next slide, please. And next slide is a simple illustration of the proposed ADU on my lot. So as you can see, this is a nine hundred ninety-nine square foot, one-story ADU with ten feet ceiling proposed to match the existing main house design, and it's going to be placed to the back end of my lot without interfering or affecting my neighbors. Given the size that is beyond eight hundred square foot, it's subject to the city's non-streamlined review process, where during the past ten weeks, my design team and I have met with the city planning team multiple times, go through, going through fact-finding, where leads to the combination of summary to the next slide, please. And this is essentially, in my language to sum it up, is a municipal code conflict or contradiction to building codes specifically. For example, if we were to build a eight hundred square foot ADU in Cupertino, it's going to give an a four square, uh, four feet setback, no questions asked. In my case, because it's larger, it's subject to the code requirement that's presented to the right side of the slide. Without going into details, this is basically trying to determine a setback requirement based on what's called the wall plate height. So this would certainly imposing a, you know, ten, ten half feet setback requirement on my current proposal, which is quite unusual for an ADU. But that's not the center of the issue. The key findings are two-folded. First, my design team and then with the working and confirmation with the planning team find out the term of wall plate height isn't defined in our city code today. But more importantly, the current requirement driven by the setback requirement associated to the seating height does not present a feasible approach for any ADUs in Cupertino to achieve a four feet setback when it's beyond eight hundred square foot. And our neighbors are having different requirements if you look at the neighboring jurisdictions. And that leads to my proposal. Next slide, please. For, that is for us to really take advantage of the upcoming ADU ordinance updates to make the two amendments to allow, to exempt, exempt wall plate height
Thank you, Wilson, that is your time has elapsed.
Yeah, thank you.
Next we have Yu Yi He, followed by Connie Cunningham, followed by a request to speak regarding AI integration. Welcome, Yu Yi.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and council members. My name is Yu Yi He, Vice Chair of the Housing My name is Yui Hee, Vice Chair of the Housing Commission. I'm only speaking for myself today. For three years, I've been a proud renter and resident of Cupertino. I love the city and have been honored to serve on the Housing Commission, advocating for forty percent of our population who are renters. However, my time in Cupertino has come to an end. My landlord, a large property management firm, increased my rent by a hundred and seventy dollars a month on top of a hundred-dollar, a hundred and twenty-dollar increase last year. While I could technically still afford it, this new rent is simply not sustainable. I tried to negotiate with them, but was met with delays and corporate red tape. They required a thirty-day move-out notice, but claimed it would take up to four weeks just to review my request and do market analysis for a lower rent. After weeks of silence, I was forced to find a new home in Mountain View. The day after I gave my notice, my own apartment was listed for less than what they offered me. It took them one day to offer a better deal to a stranger than they would to a loyal three-year tenant who always paid on time and have never caused any trouble. They were betting on the fact that because I have already lived there for three years, I would suck up the high increase and continue living. This isn't just my story. Many of my friends have been pushed out by similar practices before. The system is designed to displace good tenants. This constant displacement silences renters' voice in our community. We are a significant part of Cupertino, yet we're continually uprooted. I urge the council to investigate the practices of large property management firms to identify and address tactics that lead to renter displacement. Furthermore, to ensure renters have a consistent voice in our community, I propose creating a designated renter seat on the Housing Commission. We are forty percent of the city, and we deserve to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Yui. Next, we have Connie Cunningham, followed by a request to speak regarding AI integration, followed by Toby Levitt. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and council members. My name is Connie Cunningham. I am Chair of the Housing Commission. I'm speaking for myself only. I am saddened that we are losing a talented commissioner due to this system used by large property management firms. Yui Hee has been an active, capable, and hard-working commissioner. She is always aware of the issues, has excellent comments and discussion during the meetings. As a renter, she has often brought into the conversation issues that homeowners do not have. I will miss her. As Vice Chair, she was likely going to move into the Chair position in the coming year. This would have enhanced her voice on all issues and for renters. She would be a role model for working with the city government. As Yui Hee has asked, I urge the council to investigate the practices of large property management firms to identify and to address tactics like this that lead to renter displacement. Furthermore, to ensure renters have a consistent voice in our community, I join with her to propose creating a designated renter seat on the Housing Commission. Thank you for your time this evening, appreciate it.
Thank you, Connie. Next, we have a request to speak regarding AI integration, followed by Toby Levitt, followed by Tracy Su, followed by Chan Wong. Welcome.
Hi. Hi, my name is Avan. I'm a high school senior, bases in Penn San Jose, California. This won't nearly take three minutes. Let's hope it takes less than one. I'm speaking on behalf of a friend of mine who couldn't make it today. Don't worry, they're alive, they're just, they just have schedule conflicts. So in collaboration with the Sunnyvale City Council, our team has also successfully created an algorithm that generates short PDF meeting minutes for all council meetings. They are accessible to all on the CP Mentorship website at cpmentorship.org, using new technology in AI to improve public understanding about how their city is being run. We would love to connect if Cupertino is interested in this project as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Toby Levitt, followed by Tracy Su, followed by Chan Wong. Welcome, Toby.
Good evening. My name is Toby, and I'm with San Francisco Shakespeare Festival, and I'm here to invite you all to the show. Free Shakespeare in the Park begins performances in Memorial Park this weekend. We will perform at six PM this Saturday and Sunday, and the next two weekends through August third. The play is The Two Gentlemen of Verona by William Shakespeare, and it is a fun comedy that follows two friends as they journey from home to a foreign land. There are these two gentlemen, meet two ladies, and, well, you'll just have to come to find out. This program here in Memorial Park would not be possible without each of your leadership. I would like to offer my sincere thanks to this council for your support. Thank you very much. I would also like to thank the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce and our local sponsors, San Jose Water, the Cupertino Library Foundation, Heidelberg Materials, West Coast Community Bank, Pineapple Thai Restaurant, and Applied Materials. Each of these organizations is a wonderful friend to Free Shakespeare in the Park in Cupertino, and a great neighborhood business that perhaps we could each consider patronizing. You can still help by spreading the word. There's a downloadable flyer on the San Francisco Shakespeare Festival website, and an event you can share on Facebook, Eventbrite, and LinkedIn. If anybody wants paper flyers while I'm here, I have them. Thank you so much. I look forward to seeing you in the park.
Thank you, Toby. Next, we have Tracy Su, followed by Chan Wong. Welcome, Tracy.
Hello, good evenings. My name is Tracy. I have lived in Cupertino over thirty years, and I have done SB nine project quite a few in Cupertino for the past few years. And I noticed one ordinance is not reasonable, and, which is talking about how we allow the lot split for the frac lot. For example, a lot is, width is seventy-five, and depth is a hundred seventy-five, must be over a hundred seventy-five in order to do the frac lot. Otherwise, it's going to be side-by-side split. So I have one property, it's seventy-five by one hundred seventy-four dot six something, just point three short of a meeting frac lot split. Now, city asks me doing the split side-by-side. Let's consider this way. Side-by-side front width only seventy-five, and each lot going to become a voltage thirty-seven point five, and with a setback each side, five and five, and I only get twenty-seven point five to build a house. It's going to be very narrow and long, so I would urge the council member here to look into these ordinance, and to allow the owner to decide how they split the lot. And personally, I would prefer for long, narrow lot, you should do frac lot, front and back, okay? So we can better use the space here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Next, we have Chan Wong. Welcome. You have a presentation?
Yes.
Okay, let me just pull that up one moment.
Okay. Good evening, dear council members. I'm here to address the significant highway noise issue in North Blaney neighborhood, from Highway two eighty. Next page, please. So here, summarize the problems we have, we, the whole neighborhood is facing right now, and also the goal. So basically, we are hearing constant and also significant highway noise in our neighborhood from Highway two eighty. There are three major reasons for that. First, there are multiple openings in existing sound barrier wall in Cupertino area, and also the, even the sound barrier walls we have right now is very short. And the third reason is the highway, highway surface is very rough, which makes the noise louder. And the goal for us is to address this issue to city, and also to request the city to update the contract with placeworks to include this study in the Health and Safety Chapter of the general plan, and also to get help from the city, to ask VTA and also Caltrans to find ways to mitigate this highway noise. Next page, please. So right now, the current noise level in our neighborhood is about sixty-three dB to seventy-six dB average, and the peak can be higher than eighty. And I got some feedback from neighborhood yesterday, and they measured higher than ninety dB. The allowed noise level in Santa Clara County is forty-five to fifty-five dB. So right now, the current noise we are having right now in the, in our neighborhood is definitely higher, much higher. And based on the federal guidance, hearing loss can happen with this high and constant noise. And to verify this, right, next page, please. We also verify, we also measure the highway low, highway noise at different test points by ourselves as well. The results is listed in the, in the table. So it's around sixty-three to seventy dB. And the peak hours, during the peak hours, it can be worse, and right now, the noise lasts from eight AM to twelve AM every day. Next page, please. As I just mentioned, there are like three major reasons, right? So this picture shows the openings, the opening, the wide opening in the, in the existing sound barrier wall we're having right now. And next page, it shows they are multiple openings actually along the highway in Cupertino region. And if we go to next page, it compares Highway two eighty and Highway eighty-five. Highway two eighty is in really bad shape compared with eighty-five because it has shorter sound barrier wall and also rougher surface. Next page. Next page, please. So I do, this is a proposal from the neighborhood--
I'm sorry, your time has elapsed.
Thanks.
Thank you. And now, we will move to those members of the public who have requested to speak virtually. There were three requests to speak within the nine-minute time limit. Peggy Griffin, Rhoda Frye, and San Rao. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, council members and staff. I want to kind of piggyback on Chan Wong's presentation. I live one house away from the sound wall at two eighty, near the opening at Lucille and North Blaney, and when you pass beyond the sound wall to the area where there is no sound wall, it is significant. It is horrible. I'm asking because it, last week at the Planning Commission, they were discussing the health and safety portion of the general plan to match the housing element, and that you're required to update it, and we found out that noise was not going to be updated or even addressed. I'm asking you to, and so it's not in the scope of the contract with placework. I'm asking you to find a way to update that scope and include noise. People have complained about noise on I two eighty, they've complained about noise on Foothill and Pressway, they've complained about noise near the Memorial Park where the pickleball courts are. These things need to be addressed, and it's the children and their hearing that can be lost. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Rhoda Frye, followed by San Rao. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, good evening, council members. I'm going to be doing a ditto-ditto, I've got three comment areas. Yeah, noise is a really big deal. Yesterday, I went to the mayor's meeting, and there was talk about also a lot of noise coming from truck noise and coming from Lehigh, also known as Heidelberg Materials, at the housing project where that had previously been a truck stop. And of course, it also impacts the other, other neighbors, but there apparently is a lot more trucks, and we definitely need to be looking at noise in our general plan. On the subject of Lehigh, there have been, the deadline just passed for the, and I didn't get to it, the notice of preparation for an EIR, for the new Reclamation Plan Amendment, and this is going to be a very big deal when the EIR comes out, and please take a look on it, you can go on the county website. The other thing is for people who are concerned about Lehigh, our county supervisor, Margaret Abicoga, who replaced Joe Semidion, is having this, the annual meeting that Joe Semidion used to have in March, but they're having it on July thirty-one, Thursday, July thirty-one, at six-thirty PM at Quinlan. So please go if you have concerns about Lehigh, and also, you know, get your voice heard at the county. There's just, if you all think it's bad now, if things go through the way they want it to, it will be even worse. Comment number two was, the other day, I was driving around Lawson, and I saw that the bike lanes have been chalked out, and, and I, I started worrying about, you know, parents dropping their kids off at school, whereas, you know, I'm sure that the bike lane will get kids on their bikes, I have to wonder what will happen when it rains, and I'm hope, I'm wondering whether it would be possible to just paint those and see how it go, how it goes before putting in permanent structures for the, for that, those bike lanes, because I'm, I just have to wonder what's going to happen when it rains and drop off time. The other thing that you've heard me talk about many, many times, and I'm going to talk about it again, is the, the college district purchase of the McLean Terrace apartment. We've heard about the plight of renters. The folks that are there will be, will, will be suffering if this purchase goes through. Apparently, it would be occupied actually starting this year. It seemed like it was going to be next year, but next year, they would be evicting the residents, and it's, it's, it's a terrible thing for our community, and I hope you all can do something about it, and of course, I look forward to seeing you all at Quinlan and in September. Thanks.
Thank you, Rhoda. Next, our final speaker is San Rao. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members, speaking on behalf of myself only as a Cupertino resident. I would like to talk about two things, one will lead into the other. The first thing I want to talk about is a request for you to consider enhancing the common car, to require the city of residents to be included by the common speakers, even if it is optional. Other neighboring agencies, both cities as well as school districts, in their common car practice, require a city of residents to be specified, and I'm asking that you please consider making this enhancement to include the city of residents, and it is possible, it is optional, and if it is optional and somebody leaves it out, one may infer whether they are resident or not. The reason I'm making this comment is because we have a significant strain on our city's resources, particularly in parks and rec, from non-residents that are not applying for a paid, or are using resources for free that are a highly limited set of resources that parks and rec offers. And these limited resources are consumed disproportionately by our non-resident population that is coming into the city because our city offers superior infrastructure in some cases, or may have lesser demand. And I would welcome you to have an early start on the weekend and head our parks at six AM, and if you walk by our tennis courts, you will see what I mean. Our courts are unavailable for residents because non-residents have taken over our courts, and I would like to urge you to start with a practice of first requiring all comments that are made at council or commission to have the city of residents so that you can apply some discernment around whether you are addressing the needs of your resident population or the non-resident population. That is going to lead me into my second comment, which is the current handling of the contract at the Cupertino Sports Center. I brought this up last year when the contract was renewed by Parks and Rec. The contract specifies that ninety percent of the revenue goes to Lifetime, and ten percent of the revenue goes to the city, while the city pays all expenses of Lifetime in terms of salaries and expenses for the vendor. I have talked to professionals that are renting tennis courts at Deanser College, at West Valley College, at Foothill College, and other places. Courts rent at an average of thirty-five dollars an hour, and if you do the math, and you assume that Cupertino Sports Center could be rented out to five different private coaches, where they're going to offer five different sets of private lessons and competition will thrive-- of private lessons and competition will thrive at thirty-five dollars an hour and six hours a day, assuming seven days of lessons over fifty weeks, just renting out five courts to five coaches will bring in nearly three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars for the city in revenue without paying any expenses of these coaches. I'm asking you to bring back the lifetime contract to a future agenda session, to have a study session on how we're leaving money behind. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes those requesting to speak for this item.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Next, we have consent calendar, items four to nine. Does anyone wish to pull any item? If not, we will have public comment first.
Yes, and I will rely on Councilmember Wong to notify me of any members of the public requesting to speak from that location.
There are currently no members of the public here.
Thank you. And I see one hand raised virtually from Anil Agarwal. Welcome, Anil. Are you wishing to speak on any of the items on the consent calendar, four through nine?
Sorry, I'm, this is the first time, this is Anil Agarwal, and I have some comments about the weed abatement program. I don't know if this is right.
Oh, yes. That item is scheduled to be heard later on the agenda. It's item number ten.
Awesome. I'll wait till then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mayor, I see I have no requests to speak for this item.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I forgot to make the comment on the, sorry, for public comment, please email the city council with your comments. It's easier for us to refer to staff for any, any comments. Yeah. So email citecouncil@cupidino.org. And so for this item, I need to say something. What was the, okay, yeah, here. So two, and this is for item seven, I think. In accordance with government code section five-four-nine-five-three-C-three, I'm providing an oral summary of the recommended action. The item before the council tonight is to approve the employment agreement for the interim city manager position effective May second, twenty-twenty-five. The proposed base compensation is two-hundred-ninety-five-thousand dollars effective May second, twenty-twenty-five. The total annual compensation is four-hundred-seventeen-thousand-one-hundred-ninety-one, inclusive of fringe benefits, payroll taxes, and retirement contributions. Additional details regarding this item, including the agreement, are set forth in the agenda, item seven, and resolution associated with this item. And the agreement will be posted on the city's website tomorrow. Okay, so may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent calendar?
Four to nine. So, yeah, council members can make short comments on the items.
No, I, I, I'm seconding it.
Oh, okay. And anyone wish to make a short comment? You, okay, no? Then the roll call, please.
Councilmember Fruen?
Hi.
Councilmember Mohan?
Hi.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And next item is the lean assessment for weed and brush abatement.
Yes, Mayor, I have a short presentation for the council. This is the annual assessment of fees associated with our weeds and brush program. This is the final step in a process that begins before council in November and runs through August. Essentially, the county has conducted work on parcels in the city, and they are looking to recover their costs for conducting that work. This is outlined in City Code chapters nine-point-zero-eight and sixteen-point-four-zero-point-two-hundred. Property owners are notified to clear their hazards before the deadline, and if they do not comply, then the cleanup costs are completed by the county and then charged to the property owner's tax bill. And this hearing tonight confirms these unpaid fees. So to be clear, council is only approving the fees that are assessed for parcels, and anyone requesting, any owners that are contesting tonight may not be, are not requesting, may not request to be removed from the list. They may only contest the fees that are being assessed. So there is a twenty-twenty-five fee schedule for the season. The types of fees that are charged and included on the schedule are an initial inspection fee of a hundred-and-five dollars that are applied to every single parcel on the list, and that is, that fee covers the county servicing the property for the initial annual inspection. There is also a first administrative fee of five-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars, and that fee is if the parcel fails their inspection on the, the initial inspection. There is a second administrative fee of nine-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars that is charged if the county has to actually perform work to clear the property, and that is in addition to the costs of clearing the property. There is also a newly added warrant fee of one-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars, and that is in case the county has to take out a warrant to, to access the property if the owner is non-compliant. And then finally, one-hundred percent of the fees that are charged from the contractor, which varies, are also charged back to the property owner. And these fees are applied to the property owner tax bill. And so on June thirty, the county filed this report of the properties that are being assessed, filed them with the city, and the assessment report includes eighty-nine parcels totaling fifty-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-two dollars in fees. And on July first, the city clerk's office mailed a notice of this hearing tonight, as well as the assessment report to all of the owners on the list. And so the action before you tonight is to conduct the public hearing to consider the objections from any property owners being assessed fees, and to adopt a resolution to approve the lean assessment and collection of fees so that the county may recover their costs. And we do have a representative from the county this evening, in case there are questions from the council. I believe we have Andy Robles, who is a weed abatement inspector. Or do I see Garrick?
Garrick.
Yes, okay. I see our weed abatement program manager who has come from another weed abatement hearing, and he made it here in time. Garrick Islav, Islavsky. Yes, with, and so, yes.
Thank you. So now we go to public comment.
Yes, Mayor, I have two, I actually have three requests to speak in community hall. And I see one hand raised, one request to speak virtually. So we have SuJane Han, Hamant Mahajan, and Tracy Su. So SuJane? Yes. Welcome.
Hi, city mayor and the city councils, good evening. I am the owner of the three property listed on the first page. The owner name should be, it's Scenic District LLC, and I'm the manager of this LLC. What happened is I didn't receive the first notice later, but anyway, I, I had, I cleaned up all of the weeds on these three properties before I received the second notice later. So I disagree with the charge eight-hundred-seven dollars for each property. I, I emailed to Garrick, the person from the, in charge of this program. He did reply my email and saying because the work order was created and the five-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollar was charged for each parcel. And, but actually, I had the gardener clean up all the weed. So they created the order, but actually, there was no work involved. So I, I just don't agree with the amount.
Okay.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Hamant Mahajan. Welcome.
Good afternoon, city of Cupertino. I'm almost a decade resident here at Cupertino, and I managed to build a new house here in the city. About two years ago, at the, I was placed on this weed abatement notice, and in the last meeting, I, I did provide proof of getting this corrected, but it seems like I'm still on this notice. And now the house is complete. It has gone through so many city inspections, including the final planning inspection as well, where they, where they check everything. And it seems like after spending more than fifty, sixty thousand dollars on just landscaping itself, I'm still on that notice. Seems like it's a, it's a, it's a program, it's very easy to get on to, but it's very hard to get out of, to a point, I mean, I have to spend like a couple of hours here this time and two hours last time to be able to present here, speak, just to get out of a notice. And I did send my email to the county as well with pictures and stuff. I wish this process were a little easier for us to comply. I've been paying all my fees, but it'll be nice to have this process a little easier on residents to get out of this notice who comply. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tracy Su.
Hello, good evening, San. My name is Tracy Su. I have two property on the list, one-nine-one-six-zero Cozette and one-zero-two-zero-nine Common Road. And I talked to the manager of county, and he gave me some detailed information. So basically, here is of last year, they sent a notice, and they, they checked that, they immediately create a work order. In my case, just for creating a work order, they charge five-hundred-forty-six, but not, no work done. They didn't send any people out there. And this year, they came to, like, April, they checked everything, they say, okay, now it's good, and we did clean the weed here. So I have a question, why county charges such a high fee, just create a work, work order and nothing being done? And secondly, is of, I received a letter from the county saying they give us three option. Okay, the first option here is, are you still the owner or not? Okay? And the second option here is, is the owner going to clean the weed or not? The third one, third option here is of county going to send a professional or landscape guy to clean the weed. And my option here is B, I will clean the weed here. They send it to me in December, and I reply immediately, but they already quit a work order in October, two months earlier, before I did any agreement here. So I feel county create a work order, high charge, and without my consent here. Thank you.
Thank you. And there is one member of the public requesting to speak virtually, Anil Agarwal. Welcome.
Yes, hi, this is Anil Agarwal. I've been in, living in the Cupertino city for more than twenty years, and I enjoy living here. I, when I, I actually bought a new land in Cupertino Hills, and, which was late last year, and I got this notice about the weed abatement program. And so I went ahead and get, got the two sites cleaned up. So it looks like I not charge anything more than that. So I want to thank Garrick for responding to all my emails, questions, and everything, so I really appreciate quick prompt response. Of course, I'm, what I'm contesting here is that this fee, why this fee is being charged? First of all, selectively to some owners, and also, since we are already paying so much of property taxes between the state, county, and city, at least whatever the inspection fee should be covered there. Of course, if somebody is not able to meet the requirements and the additional costs involved, then I can understand billing them, charging them. So my question is, and my request is that this initial fee should be waived, at least for my property, because I just bought it last year. I don't, I, nothing is built here, it's just a bare ground. And I, anyway, went ahead and got it cleaned. So, and now it looks like this property is going to be there for five, next five years, even if I clean every day, every year. So I just don't understand why this fee is charged. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor, that was the final speaker. Perhaps the council would like to ask questions from the weed abatement manager, who can explain a bit of the process, and then we may request a recess for him to work with the residents that are contesting tonight.
Yeah, okay. So who would like to start with a question?
And just, while he's setting up, I'll just remind the council that any parcels that are added to the list remain on the list for three years. They must remain on the list without any violations, and then after the third year, they will be removed. And also, this program is one-hundred percent cost recovery, so any of the fees that are recovered are to replenish the program. And the, it, the program is voluntary of our residents for fire safety, obviously.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Garrick Iosilewski. I'm with the county weed abatement program. Would you like to ask questions first, or can I respond to the?
Yeah, if you can respond to those questions.
Sure, of course.
Thank you for taking notes.
Yeah, of course. So the first lady who came up and spoke about her three properties on, I believe, Scenic Boulevard is where they're located. It's three parcels that are all under the same address, so that's why, unfortunately, the way our program works is we do charge per parcel, we don't charge by physical address or by owner. So each parcel was inspected and charged the fees that we charge for all properties. Now, we did inspect the property, and it did fail the inspection. We then sent a notice, letting them know they had to correct the violation. Then we did come and we re-inspected the property, and it was still out of compliance, so we charged a second inspection fee. And then we did send a second notice because we did actually realize that the mailing address that we had for the property owner was an old mailing address, so we resent the notice and gave additional time to comply. The property owner did give us consent to send our contractor out to do the abatement work. We sent out a notice asking for their consent, and we did receive back consent for all three parcels from that property owner. So we went ahead and we created the work orders for those properties to be abated. Now, our, whether or not our contractors got there before her landscapers were able to abate the property, it sounds like her landscapers got there first, but but the work orders were still created. Again, she did give us consent to go and do those abatement works and I do have documentation of that if you'd like to see it.
Thank you, that's really good to know. So you do get, try to get the property owner consent before issuing a work order for the second inspection fee?
Correct. If a property has a structure on it, such as a home, like this one does, we have to request the property owner's consent before we can send a contractor out there. In this instance, we did request consent and it was granted to us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The second person who came and spoke, I didn't get a chance to hear what their property was, where it was located, or what their parcel number was, but it sounded like they were asking to get off the list. This is not the hearing for them to request to be removed from the list. This is only a hearing to request any fees to be removed from the property tax bill. So I have nothing further to address on that one because it sounded like the request was just to be removed from the list, is what I heard.
Yeah. So it sounds like he is already second, he has been on the list for a second year. So one more year, if he passes inspection, he will be off, right?
If a property is observed to be in compliance for three consecutive years during the first inspection of the year, they are automatically removed from the list. Again, I'm not able to verify that property's compliance history at this time because I did not get what that property was.
Yeah, okay. So the second speaker, if you would like to provide the property address later, they can verify.
Okay.
Yeah.
The second, or sorry, the third person who came up with two properties, I did talk to them over email. This year, we are charging them only the inspection fee because they were inspected and they did pass the inspections. However, the work order fee was from last year's inspections. The way it works is that after this hearing happens, any work that's done on properties, those fees get rolled over to the following year. So that's why they have a work order fee from last year because that property did fail the inspection last year and they were, and a work order was created for those properties last year. So that's why they got rolled over to this year.
Okay, thank you.
And then the fourth person who spoke on Zoom, I've also been talking to them through email. This year, they, their property was inspected and they passed the inspection. So the only fee on their property taxes this year would be the inspection fee and nothing else. And again, we charge the inspection fee to every property, whether or not they pass or fail the inspection. Again, we are a cost recovery program, so we must charge that fee in order to be able to have our program exist.
Yeah, thank you very much. So for your clear explanation, yeah. Any other question from the council? Okay, thank you. So I guess any property owner would like to get more questions answered. You can contact them on the, on the, in the floor, yeah. Okay. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I have a motion?
I move to approve. Should I read out? I move that we accept the recommended action, which is we conducted a public hearing to consider objections from property owners to adopt the resolution number 25-067, approving the lien assessment and collection of fees on private parcels for the annual weed and brush abatement program.
Okay. Any second?
Second.
Okay, no more comments, so let's vote.
Councilmember Fruen?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, next we have the study session to review application to develop new ELI and BMR housing units for developmentally disabled individuals on city-owned property along Mary Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor.
Should we take a short break, Mayor?
Oh, yeah, sure, we can take a short break. So five minutes, 8:27. I'll come back.